Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Ed's School Board Work Session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda for today?
Yes.
Can I get an approval?
Can I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the June 18th, 2025 Agenda as presented?
All in favor? Aye.
I second that.
Oh, so. Who's second? Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will start with a vote. Well, first, has everybody had a chance to look at the Human Resources Report?
Yes.
Any questions that can be asked in open session?
I don't have any.
Alright. I would need a motion for approval, please.
Can I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the HR report as presented?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. First up is the Overnight Field Trip. Mr. Kibler, Dr. Kib- oh?
Mr. Tolly's here.
Mr. Tolly's gonna do it.
I am, I am. He will do it more justice than I will. Good afternoon, President Bent, Dr. Salins, members of the board, executive team. For the record, Adam Tolly, Supervisor of CTE for Queen Anne's County. I am here this afternoon to request approval on behalf of Mr. Brian Stokes, our agriculture teacher, for the annual FFA Field Trip that they attend for the state convention. It is, like I said, it's annual, they take it every year. Mr. Stokes does a wonderful job with the FFA, and I'm happy to be here to present on his behalf and answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions.
Any other? Wow. That's easy.
Just to let everybody know, any overnight field trip has to come to the board for approval, so that's why this one's here.
All four.
Yep. A motion for approval, please.
I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the Overnight Field Trip for the Queen Anne's County FFA to travel to Garrett County to participate in the Maryland FFA State Convention. No fiscal impact.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Guido? Guido, sorry.
Okay. Good afternoon, President Bent, Dr. Salins, members of the board, executive team. My name is Darren Guido, Supervisor of Instruction for Social Studies, World Languages, Service Learning, and Multilingual Learners in Queen Anne's County. This afternoon, I'm coming before you to seek approval to renew our subscription for Discovery Education's Social Studies Techbook that we use in our middle schools. Discovery Education's Social Studies Techbook offers our students a standards-aligned, inquiry-based learning experience. It fosters literacy and critical thinking through the five E's: engage, explore, explain, extend, and evaluate. The techbooks allow our students to learn about and demonstrate an understanding of the Maryland Social Studies Standards. And we've actually been using this same resource since 2018. It's a three-year request to renew for the subscription. It will allow our students and teachers in our middle schools to continue to access the digital licenses. The purchase also includes four hours of professional learning that will be done virtually, and we'll work that out throughout the year. It's gonna come from the operational budget at a cost of $52,135.50. And the reason we're asking for three years is it actually provides a discount, a 5% discount over the three years.
The $52K, is that annually or over the?
That's for the full three years.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the three-year renewal of Discovery Education's Social Studies Techbook, Teacher, and Digital Licenses, as well as four hours of virtual professional learning. Fiscal impact, $52,135.50. And the budget source is operational funds.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you, thanks.
Mr. Watkins?
Good afternoon, everybody. President Bent, board members, Dr. Salins, Dr. Keller, executive team. For the record, my name is Rob Watkins, Supervisor of Finance. The first item I bring before you is a request for an approval for a five-year contract for our Power School products. So currently, Queen Anne's County Public Schools is in a year-to-year contract with all of the Power School products. We were able to negotiate a five-year deal for 11 of the products to bring in a 5% discount on next year's products and lowered the increase over the five years from 7% to 4%. So the total impact of this over five years is $2,486,987. This contract is funded each year, so it's a termed contract. So next year's impact is $459,165. I draw your attention to some of the paperwork that you have in front of you. It's a really colorful, really busy sheet that has all the contracts on it. The 11 contracts that we are bringing to you today, just to go through them very quickly, are all the base programs of what Queen Anne's County Public Schools operates under. It includes the Student Information System that houses our student information and demographics. The 504 program that houses our 504 programs inside of the Student Information System. It brings to you Naviance, which is a program that our high schools and our middle schools use for career development. Schoology is our learning management system that we currently use in our K-12 setting, and that is the program our teachers use to help get our programs to our students. Perform is our evaluation platform and program that we use for our teachers and our principals. Our Employee Access Center is combined with our e-Finance program and Time Clock Plus to round out our really fiscal management. Employee Access Center is a place where all of our employees can go access all of their financial documents, things like their W-2s and their financial statements and that sort of stuff. The e-Finance platform is what operates the financial platform in our county. And Time Clock Plus tracks our leave and runs our time clocks in our school system. And then the Student Registration and Enrollment is the program attached to our Student Information System, and that program enables our community to enroll into our program. We pay for a Spanish version of that too, to support our community. Smart Find is our substitute teacher program. This is when a teacher is out, they set up a job on the website. It calls and makes contact with our available substitute teachers. HR helps to populate those folks, the applicants into there. So this operates our substitute system. And Performance Matters is our assessment and our data platform. So over the course of five years, the savings is $372,706 if we agree to our five-year deal. So tonight, I'm asking for approval of this contract.
Did you mention that this is overriding what we?
I did not mention that, so let's mention that. So Mr. Combs last week brought to you a yellow sheet that included the Student Information System. At that time, we were still in negotiations with Power School. So the next day, as a matter of fact, we were able to bring the SIS system into this to get the savings on that platform as well.
So we approved that one before.
You did.
That amount gets rolled into this?
That, we're basically overriding last month's vote. So I guess we rescind last month's. Basically, the money is there, it's just less. So all those programs that he had presented are part of this yellow sheet. It just has a lower price to it.
Okay.
I guess too, just to make sure everybody, like, we're all on the same page, what we're doing. The way we've been bringing the Power School contracts before, we're only locking us into one year at a time. By doing this, we are gonna recognize the savings, but we are committing ourselves to the next five years. We feel comfortable doing that, and that's why we are supportive of this. But that is a difference, that's the trade-off for the way we've been doing it previously.
And if we lock in for the five years, they can't do any kind of increases, right?
That is correct. So we basically leveraged 5% in the first year, and then we got them to lower the upkeep from, they call it upkeep, from 7% to 4%. So essentially, we're paying 1% less next year than we did this year, which is a good savings for us going forward. And if you look at the top of the table, you can see the savings per year, how it kind of lays out. So you can see what it costs with the contract and what it costs without the contract. So next year, it's $38,000 in savings. But those savings compound over the course of five years because of the savings in basically the first year. So by the time we get to the end, you can see the difference between $537,000 and the anticipated $651,000. It's a pretty significant savings if we lock into a five-year contract. And these are our base systems. And Power School is the player in this area for most of these things. So as far as, you know, we've been, these are all current products. We've been using these products for a number of years, some for many, many years. So when we got here, we thought we would just kind of look at the opportunity to save some money just by locking in sources, products that we know we're gonna use.
And this price includes any upgrades or changes that they make to the system over the five-year period?
That is correct. Generally, the upgrade is part of the annual renewal. So it's not software, so it's not like we're stuck into version 7.0 or anything like that. We just upgraded our e-finance system this year. I thought we hadn't updated in the last seven years. Sometimes they do do, they do have upgrades to the systems, and then sometimes there's additional costs to that. At this point, they are not sharing that there are any anticipated changes to the programming in the next five years.
But it is a good question. I mean, this doesn't, if they do something like that, we might have to come back to you for that little increase or their implementation fee, or if we need training or something like that. So that is a possibility, but probably not incredibly likely.
And then if we do the five years, you guys don't have to come back every year to us and still get this approved, or we'll be good for the five?
We'll still come back.
Okay.
Because every year, we spend one of these items over $50,000. We still, the practice we've been following is that we would still come back and bring it to you just to show you we're doing it again.
Right.
One of the nice things about this is it also creates a predictable cost each year going forward. So as we're kind of working through our next budget cycles, it just gives us a good, something that costs quite a bit of money for us in a predictable format.
What did we put in initially, 10% increase to service contracts like this when we were budgeting?
Yes.
And so this is coming in five, so.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Can we get a motion for approval?
Can I make a motion, the Queen Anne's County Board of Education, approve the five-year Power School contract for 11 products? The fiscal impact is, impact is $469,165.41. The budget source is FY '26 operating budget.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, you're up next.
Next, we have our FY '26 final budget presentation. So before you is our, well, on your desks are a copy of the fiscal year '26 budget, balanced budget. So the intent of our presentation is to go over, review the budget to an extent, review increases to changes, really between fiscal year '25 and '26, which we previously reviewed, and review any changes since April 2nd. And additionally, we'll answer any questions, of course, that we have in regards to our budget proposals. So as of last week, here are our final numbers. So we're expecting our state share to be 1.4 million. Our local share is, increase is 7.6-plus million. So our total revenue increase is nine, almost 9.1 million. And it should be noted here that the Queen Anne's County Commissioners funded Queen Anne's County Public Schools at 7.6 million above the maintenance of effort. So that's 7.6 million more than they legally had to fund us at. And so we thank the commissioners for their support and to provide those extra funds for us. Our current budget is 118 million and change. Our projected budget comes in at 127 and a half million and change, which represents our budget increase of 9.1 million dollars. That brings us to a balanced budget. So when we last talked about the budget, we were a couple million dollars in the hole. We were able to go through the budget, and then we used, of course, some position cuts in order to get down to a balanced budget. One thing I want to alert us about, so typically this time of year, we have a final state formula, a state funding formula in front of us. They provide a draft funding formula that provides us really what the state share of the operating expenses fund is gonna be for the year. This year, we got to December, and then we still have that preliminary file. However, they have not shared a final state file yet. So all the districts are still waiting on the final answer on what the final funding lines are gonna be for each of the statutes tied to the blueprint funding. So today, I sit before you presenting numbers that we got in December, thinking and hoping they're going to be the same as they are when they get the final file. But it always is subject to change. So when MSD is able to share it with us, we will certainly update, and we will provide updates if there's a change to the revenue stream. Obviously, a couple hundred thousand dollars, one way or the other, makes an impact to our budget. Our budget is pretty tight. So at this point, I recommend that we proceed, and if something comes back, we'll have to come back and look at a budget amendment going forward.
Questions?
This is, this is, I'm sorry. This is how the budget lays out as far as the costs, the improvements to the budget, the increases to the budget. Again, most of the, most of the budget falls in salaries and wages and fixed charges. This is a similar graphic to what we talked about prior. A couple, in the budget book, a couple of the things I will point out to you tonight. So as we were going, as I was going through the budget, there's a couple of things that just needed to have some adjustments. For instance, we were charging athletic trainers in category 10, so I moved them to category 3 where they belong. In category 5, there was a $60,000 charge in our budget book for athletic trainers. That was an old charge that was sitting there when athletic trainers were not full-time employees of our district. So we took $50,000 of that and moved it back into category 3 to support athletics in a different way, mainly game monitors and that sort of thing. So there's those changes. One other thing I will point out, that in category 5, we added an expenditure, $144,470 expenditure in category 5. And you can see that on page, not that page, on page 23. Tuition, so what that is, is so in our revenue stream, our pre-K dollars are broken down, local and state. And then there's a third line in it called private pre-K. Long story short, there's some dollars that are isolated in our budget that really belong to some of our private pre-K providers. And we're expecting that in the next state aid file, that that $144,000 is gonna be removed. This is the dollars that eventually is gonna come down from MSD directly to the County Commissioner's Office to help support the seats that were provided in the private pre-K facilities. Right now, I have just offset the revenue with an expenditure for $144,000, so we could just see it gone. I was able to, when we did the fixed charge adjustments with the position cuts, I was able to recover the dollars, so there wasn't an additional position cut as a result.
Basically, the state, MSD, was using us as pass-through. So private providers that were jumping onto the blueprint pre-K expansion, there are two in our district for this year. One private provider and then Kitty Academy. They have some blueprint seats, so they get that per-pupil funding too. The state said, "School District, you're gonna pay them." We've argued that we shouldn't, but it was already in motion for this fiscal year, so that's why we have to do it this year. It was never gonna be our money.
Do we have to manage those pre-K programs, like, make sure?
We have to, we basically have to, like, offer to work with them for, like, professional development and things like that. But we don't, we don't directly have oversight. They are still responsible to MSD for the oversight of their programs.
Is that three and fourth grade, three and four-year-olds? Or just four?
I believe that the seats that each of them had, it was 10 and 4, 10 for the center, 4 for the private person. I believe they were all four-year-olds, but I could be wrong about them.
Any additional questions?
I don't have any.
Can we get a motion for approval?
Can I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the 2025-2026 Queen Anne's County Public Schools budget?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to welcome Ms. Hickey to the podium to speak. Next, we are presenting our food service budget. In this presentation, we are going to talk through an informational session about our food service program. And then we will talk through the end of year, kind of end-of-year budget for fiscal year '25 and our projected budget for fiscal year '26.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bent, Dr. Salins, board members, and executive team. As Mr. Watkins says, I'm Julie Hickey, the Coordinator of Food Services. I'm here this afternoon to provide you with an overview of the food service program, as well as highlight some improvements that we made to the program this year, answer any questions you may have, and talk a little bit about the expansion of some of our programs to better serve a larger number of our students who are dependent on school meals during the summertime.
Sorry. There it is, thank you. Yeah, my glasses on. Yep, just pull down.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so as of today, just to give you an idea of some of the number of meals we serve in some of our different programs, as of this afternoon, for the last school year, we've served nearly 725,000 meals to the students, and that includes both breakfast and lunch meals. And I can have an exact number by tomorrow morning, but we're right, looks like we're right on target for 725,000 meals for this school year. We do have four schools that qualify and participate in the Maryland Meals for Achievement Program, and this is our breakfast in the classroom program. And just to show you the benefit behind this program, the participation for breakfast in those four schools is around 60% as compared to 12% in our other schools that do not qualify to participate in this program. So you can definitely see the benefit. For those of you who don't know, that Maryland Meals for Achievement allows all students, regardless of their meal eligibility, to eat breakfast for free. So it definitely encourages them. Just to give you an idea of the overview of our school meal program, Queen Anne's County Public Schools offers nutritious meals that meet the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. These nutritionally-balanced meals are served each school day and meet all the requirements of the United States Department of Agriculture's Food and Nutrition Services National School Breakfast and Lunch Program. This helps to ensure that students are engaged and ready to learn in school. All meals include a variety of fresh fruit, vegetable choices, and a variety of chilled nonfat or low-fat milk, and are in compliance with all federal, state, and local health department laws and regulations. The goals of our department are to serve nutritious, affordable meals that meet or exceed nutritional standards and promote healthy eating habits. We want to ensure a safe and efficient operations with attention focused on proper food handling and training of our staff. We want to increase our participation rates, both in breakfast and lunch, by creating appealing menus and offering a variety of healthy food choices. And we want to be a self-sustaining and highly-functioning food service department. Some of the benefits of an in-house food service program are that the money stays in the county, or the money stays local. We're able to deal with local procurement and vendors. We can support some of our community farmers. We can reduce unnecessary expenses and are greater focused on the same missions and values that the district has. And as we've looked at all along, sometimes the operating budget in our first year of Self-Op may not look different, but all of our money is kept locally. Some of the improvements that have been made to the food service program this year is that we've increased our daily offerings of fresh fruits and vegetables. We've decreased the usage of plastic and paper containers, which aligns more with all of our Maryland Green schools. We have been able to partner with three local vendors. We've brought in over 25 new breakfast items to start the school year. We've added new à la carte offerings. We've reduced our staffing by 53 hours a day, and we have expanded our summer food service program, which will be serving more students this summer. So this will be the first summer that we are offering mobile meals. We have four sites. We will be starting feeding students on Monday, the 23rd, and we will feed students through August 14th. These mobile sites, like we said, are new this year, and will really get a lot of meals to the students who are dependent on school meals during the school year and sometimes don't have access to that food over the summer. So we're excited to start this up. And like we said, we are ready to go on Monday. We have been awarded two grants this year. The first grant that we received was for about $34,000, and this was from No Kid Hungry. This is the second year we've received a grant from them. Last year, the grant we received allowed us to wrap the food service vehicle, so we were identifiable as we were out there. And this year, we used the funding from them to put a refrigeration unit in that van so that we are able to do that expansion of our summer food service program, safely transporting all that food. And we have also been awarded a $2,000 grant through the Dairy Council to purchase some additional breakfast carts, which we will use at Centerville Middle School next year. We had a little bit of a decrease in breakfast participation there this year because of some timing of our bus arrivals. Students did not have enough time to come to the class, or cafeteria to eat. So we were able to get two breakfast carts, and we will place these breakfast carts both at the entrance of the car riders, as well as where the buses, so it'll allow the students to grab their breakfast en route to the classroom, hopefully increasing participation. Our focus on year one of being Self-Op was to make a seamless transition to an in-house-run department. We cut our costs where feasible. We trained our new staff. We were able to partner, like we said, with the three local vendors. We installed a new back-of-the-house software program, and what this software program was necessary to do was to be able to produce our menus, all of our recipes, allergy information, do the production records that are required by the state. So we did have to replace that software program and do all the training of that. And we were able to adhere to all of our local, state, and federal guidelines. Our focus on year two is gonna be to increase our program participation, and we're doing that by adding some new programs and also the addition of the expansion of our summer food service program. And next year, we will be adding an after-school snack program at our four Title I schools, and we're looking at the feasibility of a supper program at those four schools as well. And then obviously, we will continue to focus on everything that we focused on in year one. I've had a couple questions about what does a typical lunch look like in all of our schools? So in all of our elementary schools, we offer four entrees a day, two hot entrees, and then either an entree salad, a bento box, or a fruit and yogurt parfait. And then we offer a peanut butter and jelly Uncrustable daily, so elementary schools. Four entrees. Our middle schools all have seven entrees that are offered daily, one hot entree of the day, and then we always have a variety of pizza salad and grill items. Our high schools have seven entree selections offered daily, one hot entree, and then they either have a taco, potato, or a nacho bar in addition to that hot entree, and then of the variety of the pizza grill and salad items. All of our schools offer fresh fruit, vegetables, and a variety of nonfat or low-fat milk daily. Just a little bit on building a local program here in county. We are able to build our menus geared towards what the student tastes like. We can change our menus very quickly, so if we run an entree item for once or twice, and we don't think it's being well-received by the student, we can make a quick change to our menu so that we are able to accommodate students' likes while we remain compliant. We're working on building up our summer program to provide meals in county where the students need them. We're able to access local food sources to reduce our shipping costs, and we obviously are using our lessons learned from our first year to reduce costs and increase our revenues. Any questions that I can answer on the food service program?
So reading total revenue and then fund balance needed.
Let me get, let me get there.
Okay.
So that's next. So, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're good.
So, first off, the food service budget is a completely different fund in the state of Maryland. So Fund 5, Fund 1 is our operating budget, so all the monies are completely separated into two of the two funds. So Fund Five, Fund One is our operating budget, so all the monies are completely separated into two funds. And food service funds generated inside of food service must stay in food service. So there are ways that we can generate funds. Federal and state reimbursements for all the meals that we provide, grant funds. But a good chunk of, about a third of the total revenue comes from cash sales. That's the sales for snacks, the children that use when they purchase the lunches and all the other things. The food service fund balance currently is saying at $1.945 million as of June 30th. The fund balance that exists in food service can only be used for food service. So 100% of it has got to be used to support the food service program. That number is pretty high. That number exceeds what we should have in a food service budget. So we had to develop an action plan in order to spend down this money. And last year, we were planning on using the fund balance to help support the implementation of a local program. So let's go through what this year looks like. So the total revenue this year, we're projecting to be about $3.15 million. The total expenditures, about $3.48 million. We're projecting that right now, we're $334,000 deficit for this year. So we're planning on using the fund balance out of that $1.945 million to offset this. So with your permission, we will use that money to bring the budget for fiscal year '25 to zero. Now, mind you, the school days just ended today, so we have not crunched all the numbers or processed all the final numbers yet. So these are in some ways still projections. In fiscal year '26, we're expecting projected revenue, and I think we were modest with our projected revenue increase, but we want to present conservative numbers to you and not aggressive numbers. So while we think that revenue could be higher, and it's a conservative increase over this year. The projected expenditures bring in the salary increases for the food service personnel and a representative cost, food service cost for food that really is representative across the food service industry. You call it the CPI index. So right now, we're generating a projected loss next year of $694,000. So we would need to use $694,000 of our projected fund balance to offset that deficit. Now, we are not asking you today to use the fiscal year '26 fund balance. That wouldn't happen until the end of next year, but I want to give, we want to give you a picture of what it looks like kind of going forward. When you look at how the fund balance spend down happens, we knew we were going to use some of it this year. We knew probably going forward. We're working very hard, and Julie on her end is working very hard to try to figure out how do you get the costs down even further so we can kind of keep a sustainable program? There's some ideas coming forth, and we'll keep working on that. In the meantime, the $1.945 million, when you look at the two years' worth of fund balance expenditures, still leaves $916,000 in the coffer if we used $694,000 next year. So really, right now, while we are not, while we're upside down, and food services across the state are sometimes upside down as we're kind of working through this, we think that we can get control of some of these costs and continue to sustain a locally-run program. There's lots of advantages to a locally-run program.
Biggest thing is looking at these programs, which are going to also increase our revenues by adding those additional programs, expanding our summer program, so we can increase them.
I have a question. When I'm looking at the FY '25 projected to FY '26 in terms of changes, things like salaries and wages, I see it directly above like positions. It looks like the positions that are only going to change going in '26 is those three food service workers.
Yes.
Then going down below that, the expenditures with wages and salaries, it doesn't appear there's going to be any changes with any of those positions, but yet there's an increase. Are those, are individuals getting raises, or how is that? What is the increase in the '26 from the '25?
So the food service employees are part of one of the negotiated agreements, so their salaries come along with that. So all the full-time people are getting a salary increase in consumer it too with the other folks in that contract. That would include folks like secretaries and school assistants, so they're in that contract.
Gotcha.
We did provide a small raise for the hourly workers as well.
So in order to work on the $1.9 million fund balance and all these proposed changes, I guess my fear is that they just get rolled into enhancements and things like that. It's, that's how we're going to be able to utilize it moving forward is improvements to the program, not necessarily wages and salaries. Like you were saying, those are all contracted wages that were the increases from.
Yes, that's correct.
So two questions here. When we're looking at the projection from '25 to '26 as a $300-some-thousand-dollar change.
It is.
If that trend continues, that fund balance is going to be gone within three to four years.
That's correct.
Have we figured out a way to mitigate that situation? Because going from $334,000 to $694,000 in a single year is pretty astronomical. And then if you continue that process, another $300,000, that's almost a million dollars. We don't have that for FY '27. So what is the situation moving forward? We're only looking two years. I understand that. But we have to figure out a way where we're not going to continue raising that cost and being in the hole that much.
That's correct. So, you want to go?
I mean, like we said, it's going to be a matter of continued cost control, looking at where else we can cut costs, looking at, like we said, increasing those revenues by the addition of extra programs.
But in two years, is it going to save a million dollars?
Potentially.
Okay.
So where we are right this very second is we're looking for approval to move forward with our local food service program next year. And we thought it would be advantageous for the board to get a couple of updates and budget updates to food service through the course of next year. We're obviously going to do updates for the Fund One budget, the big budget, through the course of next year. We thought that as we worked through next year's budget, you would also like to see a food service update as well. I think that will help us monitor where we're going and how we're trending next year. When we have our final numbers and we've gone through the financial statement audit, typically we get that in October, November. We can come back and look at that and look at how the food service program performed after we've gone through the financial statement audit. And then at that point, we will know the actual numbers that we're using from this current year. These are, some of these numbers are still projections. So remember that, so for instance, the reimbursements and some of the expenditures are lagging values. So we're solid for calculated values up through April, and then May and June are projected values. So as we finish the year, the actuals will come to life, and when we get through the audit, we'll know exactly how this turns out.
And just so everybody's on the same page, we're not projecting any increases in the cost to our students for their meals, correct?
Correct. We're going to keep the meal prices the same going into next school year.
Okay.
So we have a, I guess, I don't know if tradition is the right word to use or not, but we usually do that every other year, is bring a proposal together. We did raise food prices, or the meal prices, last summer. I will point out, Julie, you said it was over COVID, we missed a year of price increases.
Correct. So yeah, historically, it's been an every-two-year increase to meal prices. During COVID, it went a four-year period without any increase. And then, of course, when we came back, meals were free to everybody. So like we said, it kind of missed a step in there, one of the two-year increase.
Okay.
What's the typical increase, like percentage-wise?
10 cents.
10, oh, 10 cents, okay. One last question. When the fund balance runs out, and say it does, and we haven't balanced it, what happens to the food program at that point? Say it hasn't, we haven't saved that million dollars, and we run out of the fund balance, and we are in the red.
I think we'll have a good picture of that for next year. So probably when we get to Christmas, when we go around Christmas, the middle of the year somewhere, we'll go over the budget, and we'll have a good picture to present to you guys about how we're trending for next year. And we'll have actuals, of course, for this year to go over. So at that point, I think that we will be able to have an informed decision about what we would like to do going forward. Trying to put together a local food service program has lots of benefits to our, to our school system and to our community. The auditing, the state auditing of the food service program is easier conducted if it's a local program. As far as, if you're projecting, no, no, we're not going to be able to afford, basically you're asking, what happens if we can't afford the third year?
Correct.
Is what's happening. I think, I think we're going to have to evaluate that next year and make a decision sometime next year going forward on how that looks. We certainly could, we certainly could go after a different program or look at an RFP for a third-party service.
But the other answer to that is, if, if we would run out of fund balance and have to pay this bill off, we would have to use the operating budget to supplement it. I mean, that-
We definitely don't want to go that route.
No, but that's, that's why, I wanted to make sure we directly answered your question. Every other point Mr. Watkins is pointing out is correct. We need to come back, middle of next year, see if we're still on this trend or if we're reversing or going in the other direction. But the direct answer to your question, if we did exceed the fund balance we had, we would have to fund it with it. We can go that way, operating budget to the food service budget, but we can't take that money back from the food service.
This was the first or second year?
First year.
First year.
You know, so we did have some startup expenses with it being a first year as well. Like we said, the new software program, training of new staff, all new uniforms. So I mean, there are some expenses that we saw this year that we will not see going forward next year.
And the conservative numbers you put in there, obviously, things could happen, but we would, we would think that that up to $700,000 usage is probably a ceiling. The hope it would be with the addition of the summer programs and things like that, it's going to be less than that. We are, we are trying, Mr. Watkins and I, with everything we do with our budget that we're bringing, it's going on this conservative sort of worst-case scenario ends.
It's just seeing a number go from $334,000 to $694,000 in a single year is just slightly alarming, is all.
No, absolutely.
And I'll be honest, the three of us had the conversation too. Like, I brought up the point of missing that one increase. You know, we see that number, and like, should we consider making up that increase that we missed during COVID and putting it here? We felt like, could we justify it? Yes. But the decision that we made collectively is, but we do have this fund balance to support it. So let's see what happens with the increased usage and things like that. Let's keep on that schedule of two years. Let's not put it on the backs of the price increase.
I do have a question. If you did the 10%, I can't do the fast math between free breakfasts and paid lunches and all that stuff. What would the 10 cents be at the current sale of, like, for this past year? Obviously, this is the last day of school, so you haven't crunched numbers. But like loosely, what would that 10 cents increase be?
I have it on my computer.
Okay.
I was going to say, because you did it with a 10 and a 15 percent.
10 cents doesn't sound like a lot, but I just wondered, times 750,000, like, what that looks like.
It's essentially $70,000 for a 10 cent increase. 10 cent increase is about, it's about $70,000.
So the vending machines, this is going to be an off-the-wall question here.
Yeah.
It's only $8,000 revenue?
Yep, it's a-
Oh, is that a contract? Like, does a school own the vending machines and we fill them?
No.
So we're basically splitting the profit, we're splitting that?
We just get a percentage of their sales.
So would that be a possibility to invest in vending machines and then having staff to do it? Because then you're recouping, you're getting all the costs at that point.
We could.
Food service workers could be the ones that fill it.
I think the vending machines are there, I could speak from Centerville Middle School. It's very convenient. The kids mostly purchase their snacks and the things that would come from the vending machine right from the line.
Yeah.
They're encouraged to do so. If you think about this, it was a revenue stream, $8,000 for 14 schools over 10 months is pennies. I agree with you, though. I don't disagree with you.
I was thinking more like the high school levels, because I mean, a lot of students are parents, and activities and games are used in-
Well, and they would be used over the weekends when Parks and Rec are in the building.
Yeah, after school.
So that was my, I kind of figured, seeing $8,000, I kind of figured we were in a contracted thing. I don't know how long the contract is or what kind of agreement we're in. But I don't know if it's going to make a massive amount, but that's just one little way to start closing the costs.
Thank you.
Look into it.
So I believe we were seeking, we were seeking your approval for moving forward with the fiscal year '26 budget for food service.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was just about to ask.
Make a motion, the Queen Anne, make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the 2025-2026 food service budget.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Ms. Baraklo.
You have two actions.
Good afternoon, President Bent, Vice President Capes, board members, executive team, Superintendent Salins. For the record, my name is Darrell Baraklo. I'm the supervisor of Facilities and Design. Coming before you this evening, seeking approval of the 2025 Educational Facilities Master Plan. You'll recall, last month, on May 5th, I presented for information the draft copy of the Educational Facilities Master Plan, or the EFMP. Since that time, the document was posted on our website for public comment, for public review and public comment. With that review, we did receive one public comment that pointed out a couple of typographical errors that we've since corrected. The only other changes that were made to the final document was that, President Bent, your comment regarding Fox Farms, we did move that to District One, so that was now corrected.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. And then the last two things that we did get was we received the Department of Planning and Zoning Review and Approval. That's included in your packet. And we also did receive the approval back from the Maryland Department of Planning for our enrollment projections for the 10-year period. So with that, the document with board approval would go before the, it would be submitted to the state to meet the July 1st deadline. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Don't.
I have both documents from the Department of Zoning and the state of Maryland, if anybody wanted to see them.
Should be, I think we have them here.
Okay, that's fine. It's just originals.
Yeah, right there.
Make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the 2025 Educational Facilities Master Plan for submission to the state.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Next on the agenda, I have coming the contract award for the stormwater management and asphalt repairs at Kennard Elementary School. On May 23rd, we made plans and specifications available for the asphalt repairs, inlet repairs, and the installation of a stormwater management device to collect the runoff from the asphalt area that is on the north side of the site. If anybody's been to the school, you've probably noticed there's a large sinkhole that's continually getting larger and larger with each passing year. This project is going to address that and solve that problem. And in doing so, it's going to also address some other stormwater runoff issues that kind of stem from the way stormwater management was addressed with that renovation project that took place some 20 years ago out there. So we'll be taking care of those issues. So we made plans available on May 23rd. On June 12th, we had a bid opening. Five contractors, five pre-qualified contractors submitted prices on the project. You'll see the bid tabulation there with the five contractors listed. Martin's Excavation and Hauling LLC out of Centerville, Maryland, was the lowest responsive responsible bid with a bid of $98,000. The other bidder was Yoder's at $115,900, and then the other three were from the western shore side of things. So I think that's probably the explanation of why their prices are considerably higher.
I was going to ask if it included travel.
I'm guessing that it did. I don't, I don't know. I'm guess, again, I didn't call and ask the question, but I'm assuming that they're probably getting material from over there and dump trucks crossing the bridge several times, back and forth hauling material probably racks up a pretty substantial gas bill and toll bill and all the other type of bills. But we did get, I mean, between the two, between the two local contractors, I mean, we did get very competitive pricing. And as far as Martin's is concerned, they're the contractor that have handled, that has handled the Phase One and Phase Two repairs at Kent Island High School for the paving and stormwater work out there. Any questions on the project or the bids?
Can we get a motion?
Can I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the award of the construction contract for the stormwater management and asphalt repairs at Kennard Elementary School to Martin Excavating and Hauling LLC. Fiscal impact $98,000, zero cents. Budget source FY 2026 local CIP funds.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I make one other point? Can I make one other point, just for, and I don't want to, I know you guys already voted, but I did, I should have mentioned that the bid was for $98,000, and I do have a 15% contingency on that for a total encumbered amount of $112,700. So hopefully, that doesn't change anybody's decision on the bid or on the approval. But I just wanted to point that out.
$112,000? I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it for action items. There are no information items. Before I move to future meetings, are we good? Okay. So future meetings, our next meeting will be July the 2nd, 6:00 p.m. And if there are no other actions, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Or that's not May 15th, that should be June 18th, 2025 Budget Work Session at 4:51 p.m.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well done.